Thank you all for coming to our town hall meeting for District Six. We planned this meeting well before we knew the Lakers would be in a playoff game, or that the state of the schools address would be tonight. So I think we've probably lost some folks to both of those, but we're grateful you're here. I want to remind you that we try to do six town halls a year with two district-wide town halls covering all the issues of District Six, and then four neighborhood or quadrant town halls where we divided the district up into basically four areas. Sort of the central city around the south part of Old Pasadena, where we have a lot of multifamily and more of an urban quality of life. South Orange Grove in that area, San Rafael Hills in the Arroyo, and then Linda Vista, Annandale in that area. So this, of course, is the Linda Vista, Annandale District Town Hall. We're going to try to focus particularly on a couple of issues that relate to Linda Vista and to this area. But as always, it's your meeting, so we want to welcome questions and comments and talk about anything that you all wish to talk about. As usual, I'll kick it off with some general comments about the mischief that we've been up to at City Hall. But before I do that, I want to introduce an old friend, somebody that we've worked with over the years on many issues. Roland Homer is the Vice President of Facilities and Campus Planning for the Art Center, and it's because of the center's generosity that we're here tonight. And I wanted him to say a word, and so if we could welcome Roland to his own campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. On behalf of President Karen Hoffman, I'd like to welcome everybody to our newly renovated Almanson Auditorium. I just wanted to take a quick moment and talk about this renovation real quick, because you are the third public group to be able to actually come and see this auditorium. And we did this renovation with donations from the Almanson Auditorium, or the Almanson Foundation, as well as the Fletcher Jones Foundation, and through some philanthropy from our board, particularly Zack Snyder. If you remember the auditorium before, there were about 200 more seats, and it was about 6% grade steeper. So we had to correct the 1979 design of the auditorium. And one of the key aspects of this is really the integration of the school's color and the school's emblem of the dot, as you see. And it really is a moment of dealing with the acoustics. So not only do we go from Art Center orange to black in 18 shades of color, but we really do bring it on to decibel levels and really truly make this not only a great place for speeches or presentations, but also a high-quality theater. So again, for our film department, this is top of the line. It's the most brilliant experience you'll have in a theater. It's ruined everything I will do out in the public, I tell you. But in any case, in any event, I'm very happy to see a lot of familiar faces. It's been a long time since we've had you on campus, and we're very excited to be able to reopen our doors and to do these types of events. And we look forward to several more of those town halls in the future. So welcome and enjoy.
Thank you, Roland. Thank you very, very much. And we've, again, really enjoyed working with Art Center over the years, citing the south campus and keeping so much open space and sort of helping, again, with the quality of life here in Linda Vista with this campus. So we're grateful to you. So, you know, we've been busy at City Hall. That always seems to be my message and my common refrain here. We're in the budget cycle now. As you know, our budget fiscal year runs from July 1 each year to June 30 of the following year. So we're in a series of meetings where we discuss each department's budget for the coming fiscal year. It'll be fiscal year 2024, so that's July 1, 2023, through June 30 of 2024. And we've been doing it a little bit differently this year with committees hearing greater in-depth presentations by each department. And then at the full council, we're simply calling out issues for a discussion at the will of the council, rather than having, again, the full-blown budget discussion. So please do keep an eye on the agendas. The committee agendas are especially important. I've had two this week already after the Monday night council. We had an ed tech meeting on Tuesday and then another meeting on Wednesday. On Tuesday, I was actually at the RBOC meeting where I sit as the council representative for the Rose Bowl Operating Company, and we were discussing something that I'm fairly certain most of you have heard about, and that's the project to have a family golf center down at the Brookside and the golf courses. And this is something that has been discussed a lot, there are a lot of plans for it, but it's not without complete controversy. And so I invite you to be sure to keep an eye on the council agendas, because what we decided earlier this week on my motion was that rather than certify an EIR and approve the project at the RBOC level, that this is different enough and it involves a financial partnership with the city. So we're going to actually, and the board, I was grateful unanimously, adopted the motion, we're going to have the city council hear the matters of the environmental impact report, the project, and the financing. So that'll be a great opportunity. I know Nina Chomsky will be there. I'm sure other, you know, neighbors and residents from Linda Vista will weigh in, as you should, on that project. And, you know, the RBOC has been in a long-term sort of financial planning stage, looking at lots of different options. There were even talk of, you know, a sort of high-rise hotel in the Arroyo. So there were a lot of things left on the cutting room floor, and this project has kind of emerged as one that, in many of our views, it fits with the central Arroyo, which has a strong emphasis on family recreation. And it's a way to generate additional funding so that we can continue to have the stadium and the Rose Bowl game and all the rest. No doubt, you've also noticed there have been events at the stadium, and we did get some complaints this past weekend about the music festival. And it's interesting how sound works. I'm certainly not a sound engineer, but the complaints that we got tended to be further out from the Arroyo, from the stadium and the golf course. The music festivals, as you know, are not in the stadium. They're on the golf course with stages and food vendors and the like. And it's very strange sometimes how that sound will carry, and it's louder. So, for example, over on Poppy Peak, we got complaints, more so than, say, in Linda Vista in that neighborhood, for whatever reason. So we're well aware, believe me, of the sacrifices of the neighborhood and the impact on the neighborhood when we have events at the Rose Bowl. And we've got some more things coming up, you know, more music, more soccer games this year. And again, this is one of the things that council struggles with, is what's the right balance to be able to ensure the financial stability and future of the Rose Bowl while weighing the impact on the quality of life for all of us, and mostly here in West Pasadena, as well as across the Arroyo, in what we call District One on the city council. Police oversight has been a big issue at City Hall. You probably know by now that we hired a new police chief earlier this year. Gene Harris is his name. He was the chief in San Gabriel. I actually met him 25-plus years ago when he was a lieutenant in Monterey Park, and I served on an interview panel to help the chief of the Monterey Park Police Department. I was a prosecutor at the time in the U.S. Attorney's Office, helped him select captains. There was a captain opening, and it's not uncommon for law enforcement to sometimes ask outside members of law enforcement or policing or citizen groups to come and participate in an interview. So I met him when he was a young lieutenant. I think he had been a lieutenant like two months, and he was already applying to be a captain. So this is someone that's always, you know, had goals as a, you know, in police leadership. And he was the chief in San Gabriel. He's now our chief, and I look forward to having him at one of our future town halls. And I think you'll agree with me, he's a great choice by our new city manager, Miguel Marquez, who started last, the end of last summer. So we do have some new faces at City Hall. Politically, I should just mention that this isn't a political meeting, but just in terms of your city governance, you know, next year, we have municipal elections along with the larger state and county and national elections. A few years back, you'll remember, we went to alignment with the county and state and federal elections. So we used to have our own municipal elections, but through an attorney general mandate and then some deliberations, we determined to go with the larger sort of scale elections. And we have eight members of the city council. There's seven council districts and one citywide elected mayor. And through sort of a quirk of charter reform and a tragedy, last year, we lost John Kennedy colleague and council member from District Three. We have six of the eight seats are up for election next year. So it's conceivable that, you know, there could be six new faces sitting around that dais. Now, if history's any judge, it won't be six new faces. It'll definitely be a new face or two, because I know one member is giving up her seat to run for a state office, and there may be other announcements from other members around the dais. But we haven't quite gotten, you know, hit by that barrage of all the campaigning and all the mail and forums and the like. But later in the fall, I would expect that that'll really start to happen, and it's important. So we should all really, you know, pay attention to that. In terms of policing, the Anthony McLean shooting has attracted a lot of interest in the community and taken candidly a lot of time, energy, and resources from the council and the city. And we heard that matter on Monday night. The Office of Independent Review reviewed the shooting, and so now all the external reviews are completed. And suffice it to say that every outside expert who's reviewed the matter has concluded that the shooting was in policy. And although tragic for sure, justified by our officers, when confronted with someone who was armed with a loaded handgun, didn't drop it, didn't comply with the officer's commands to drop the gun and surrender. So tragic and painful for a lot of people in the community. The Monday night meeting was tense, because, you know, there were accusations about the shooting. And again, I think it's a much more emotional issue for many people, and it is painful, given some of the really bad history we have in this country, you know, around racism and sometimes that seeping into policing. But in this case, I certainly was convinced that it was regrettably the only real choice that our officers had. And we do have police oversight now in Pasadena. We unanimously adopted a new policy of having a citizens' police oversight commission. They're actually hearing the report tonight. And we have an independent police auditor. We call him the IPA, who reviews all of our policies and practices around discipline, use of force, and sort of state-of-the-art, community-based policing, which is what we want. So I'm sure we'll hear more about that as well. We adopted recently a direction to staff that by 2030, we want to be 100% carbon-free in Pasadena. And this has been very controversial in terms of climate change and the water and power, which still does consume and generate, for our use, a lot of carbon-based energy, electricity. And certainly, it was my view that we need to get moving on climate change, you know. In the words of some, it may already be too late, but we still have time to try to do what we can to keep average temperatures from rising. And the state had already implemented a mandate that we be at a certain percentage by 2030, and we've joined other communities in trying to go further and get to 100% if we can. The big question will be affordability and whether there will be a newfound supply of renewable energy, solar, wind, geothermal. Some are even talking about nuclear. We'll see. That hasn't worked very well, certainly in California. But so we'll see if the supply can keep up with the increased demand for green energy. And, you know, it's a policy that the council adopted, and the council can revisit that, and I'm sure we will, if the question of affordability is, you know, really problematic. And we're also looking to federal and state government to help us in terms of resources and even tax credits and the like to help get there. So that's just a sampling of what we're working on. I'm sure there are other things that you've heard about that you'd like to speak about. But what I'd like to do now is turn to the presentations that we have. We basically have two groups of staff here tonight to present on two issues. One is a little bit attenuated from Linda Vista proper, but I suspect that it's a transportation modality that a lot of us use. I know I do. And that's Avenue 64, where we've done a complete streets project already, and we're now taking that even further with a roundabout project. And I'm super interested to hear this presentation. So I'm going to ask our Public Works staff, and I don't know if DOT is also here. Let me introduce everyone that's here, and that way you'll at least know who's here, even if you don't remember all the names and the faces. But from Public Works, we have, and again, these are all staff, for the most part, that I've worked with for years. And, you know, it's a key to a healthy, successful organization is to have good people who are in their jobs for a time where they have the experience and the wisdom. And I certainly would endorse this group to you as that. So from DOT, Rich Deluvio and Joaquin Sikas. So Rich and Joaquin. And from Public Works, Brent Maue, Michael Bartonians, James Tong, Rich Yi, and Elvin Jang. So I guess DOT would say this is a fair five Public Works against two of them. Yeah, but we're really grateful to all of you for, you know, working late tonight and coming to our meeting. So let me turn it over to Public Works, I guess, or DOT, or both of you, to talk about the roundabout project.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. My name is James, again. I'm the principal engineer for the civil group. So in civil group, we do like street improvements, resurfaces, sidewalk replacement, storm drains, sewer. So that's what our group does. And this project is in collaboration with both Department of Transportation as well as Public Works. So we're going to do like a combination of our presentation. The first slide is going to be in regard to the project background and also the outreach. I know before the design came into fruition, DOT did a lot of the outreach with the affecting residents. So I'll have Rich Deluvio cover the outreach and also the project background. And after that, I'll come back and introduce the project scope of work and the scheduling. Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Rich Deluvio, principal planner in Department of Transportation. Give you a quick background. We started actually this process 10 years ago, as you can see, back in 2013. It was a complete streets project where we bring the residents in, we start with a working group. It's a very similar process that I know some of residents here were involved in. We had a Linda Vista complete streets project, and that's the result of that, some of that was the medians that are on LIDA now, as a traffic calming aspect. So this was a similar process. We put a working group together of San Rafael residents, the district liaison at the time. We had a consultant KOA and city staff. And we worked with the community and the residents to come up with different ideas and options of some traffic calming throughout the San Rafael area, but especially on Avenue 64, obviously, was most of their biggest concerns. So through that process, we came up with some alternatives. One of them being, we'll talk about tonight, is a roundabout at the intersection of Avenue 64 and Burley Drive. And then there's a couple other intersections that we're doing some traffic calming elements at, and my colleagues at Public Works will show you those and the design of those. But the residents there, as you can see, they've been waiting for this to come to fruition for quite a while. They're happy that we're moving forward. And we're kind of excited about this project. It's a different type of element that we're going to use. And for those of you that know that intersection, it's a pretty wide intersection, and it's a section of Avenue 64 that unfortunately has had a history of speeding problems at that location. The speed limit is 35, but the posted is 35, but unfortunately, what we call the 85th percentile, which means 85% of the people unfortunately are driving it sometimes at 43 miles an hour. So for all those residents there, they've been, you know, this is a very big concern of theirs. So as we all have, you know, concerns in here in Linda Vista, I know. So anyways, with that, I'll let them go on and talk about it. But, you know, these are the type of resident-driven programs that are important, and it's important for us to get residents involved in this process, because eventually, when the funding comes around, which this did, we believe we can make some, you know, very positive changes to people's quality of life. So with that, I'll hand it off to my colleagues in Public Works.
Thank you, Rich. So the project consists of two traffic calming elements. One of them is roundabout. So as you see to your right, far right, is the design of the roundabout. The, so that's one of the traffic calming elements. And then the second one is the curb extension, which we will see later on the slide, is at the Chevy O'Dell, where we are doing the curb extension. So the purpose of these traffic calming elements is, there are two that I can think of. One is to reduce speeding. As Rich alluded to, we have, you know, more than normal in term of the speeding out on Avenue 64. And the roundabout there at Burley and Avenue 64 will help reduce, not only reduce the speeding there, but will also help with the safety to the pedestrian. As you notice, at the choker, at the bottle, is where we have crossing. So pedestrians have shorter path of travel to cross the street surrounding the roundabout. So there are three locations, as I mentioned earlier. The two locations, we already have the design, and we have the money. So the one, the two at Burley and Chevy O'Dell, we will be advertising that pretty soon. And Michael, the project manager, he'll be going over the schedule of the project. The third one over at Glen Olin is something that we have conceptually started. The design has not been completed yet versus the first two, Burley and Chevy O'Dell. You want to go to the next slide? So this is, basically, you're looking at the close-up version of the roundabout over at the Burley. So as you notice, we, the roundabout elements also consists of streetlights and a lot of landscape beautification, as well as hardscape surrounding the roundabout. And the second one is the curb extension. So as you notice, the street, once the project is completed, the curb extension will basically be going out about approximately 20 feet from the existing curb alignment. And so making it, we're basically choking it in so that cars will slow down as they pass that particular T in the section. And then you see in the median is the stamped concrete median. It's very similar to, if you're familiar, going to Fay Oaks, as you're heading to South Pasadena toward like 110 freeway entrance, you see those red, which might call it the stamped concrete, which is all surface stamped. So this is going to be very similar to that once we have that project completed. Next slide. And the third one is the Glen Olin, the one that I was introducing earlier, is only in concept. Again, it's a curb extension, too. It's going to be very similar to what we're going to be doing on the Chevy O'Dell. And then Michael, the project manager, he will be going over the schedules and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So on the screen, we're showing a tentative schedule of when we're anticipating all the construction activities to take place. And as James said, we're looking at advertising the project within the next few months. And once we receive bids from various contractors, we'll be able to see who's the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and move to award the project in early fall, after which we will spend a few months executing the contract and procuring materials that will be needed. And the construction should start early 2024. Now, it says staged construction early 2024, and that's because we understand Avenue 64 is a very heavily-used street. And because of that, we will be making sure that at least one lane of travel in both directions is always open on Avenue 64, especially at the Burley intersection, where we received a fire department approval to close the Burley Drive in January and February of 2024. And Chevy O'Dell will also be closed for about one week, and that's because when we pour concrete, we'll need time for the concrete to cure. But other than that, you know, we just wanted to give a quick update on where this project was. I know, as Rich said, it's been in the works for a while, and we want to make sure everyone in the neighborhood stayed aware and was kept up to date. I don't know if we have time to take any questions, if there is.
I have one to start.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. And you mentioned the Complete Streets in Linda Vista. That's on LIDA with the, many of us came here, and there have been others. I think there's one underway right now on Union near, sort of in between Lake and...
The protected bikeway.
Right. There's a, so is that Complete Streets or a different project, a bike?
It's a bike project, but it falls in line with that Complete Streets.
Right. One question is, we tried this a few years back in kind of the Langham Hotel area, and people really struggled with the roundabouts. And I know they're very popular back east and in Europe, but my recollection is we even removed a couple of them, that we had tried them and then removed them. But I know there are a couple that are still there.
Yeah.
For example, at Glen Arm and Los Robles, I think, and maybe another street as well. Yeah, Omalino.
Which is very different.
Come over and use the mic, Rich, please.
And thank you for bringing that up. That's one thing we've kind of failed to mention. This is one of three that are going to be put in eventually in the city. There's going to be two more eventually put in on Hill Avenue, by the way. But this is a, what I would consider a real roundabout. The ones on Glen Arm that the folks here in Pasadena have seen for a while, those still have the always stops. So they really don't work as a roundabout should work, where it's just yield. So what this one will do is, which is actually better for the folks that live there for noise and pollution as that, is it just slows folks down, but they don't come to a complete stop. So it is like the ones that are used, a true roundabout or true traffic circle, is it just, they just slow folks down. It's a yield, so they just go around at a slower pace. That's all we really want to do, is just to slow folks down. So these will work differently than the ones that are on Glen Arm, by the way, that have stop signs. These won't. They'll have yield, but they work, these will be, we will only put these type in from now on if we do.
Great. Other questions about the roundabouts? So if everyone heard the question, it's about, wouldn't it be cheaper and more efficient to put speed bumps? And that's a question we get a lot, and I'll let you field that, Rich.
That would have been an option. We, as I mentioned, Avenue 64 has a speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and the amount of traffic that it carries is not a street that you would put those on. We only put them on as a policy here in the city. It's actually a council policy. On streets that are what we would call residential or low-volume streets, 20, a speed limit of only 25, and it has to have, you know, it would be less than 4,000 car trips per day. And as you probably are aware, Avenue 64 carries a lot more traffic than that. So it's just not the right street for it. But it, you know, on other streets, it's absolutely an option. So that's one of the reasons we came to this was it was the best option for what was available to us to give them as a tool for the folks, you know, to slow the traffic down with the tools that are available. What was, you know, we have a toolbox, we call it, of different traffic calming. And this was the one that they felt more comfortable with as a community in that area. Yeah, I'll start with the second one.
Repeat the questions.
Yeah. Okay, so there was two questions. Okay, so there was two questions. The first one was, it wouldn't be better to slow them down before they enter the traffic circle? The second one was, had to do with the lines. The lines that are currently out there are not bike lanes. They do look like that because it's not heavily parked, but they're really just edge lines. We call them parking edge lines that we had put out there before as a visual narrowing of the roadway, as a tool we do use to slow speeds down, because we've been working on Avenue sixty-four for quite a while. We have the speed feedback signs are out there now. And our goal is with these different options, and that's why we're not just doing it at one location, is we're trying to slow the corridor down. So these are all little pieces of that. And I think we, a lot of us think of going down to that intersection, going southbound. Well, you know, fifty percent of the, the traffic is also coming northbound. So this is also going to be what we call a gateway treatment. So as you're entering the city of Pasadena from the city of LA, it's the first thing you're going to come to is this traffic circle. So we're hoping that it just kind of changes the dynamic of what Avenue sixty-four, from what it is now to what we'd like to see it to be in the future.
Let me take a crack at the first question, which was the part about, wouldn't it be easier to just slow the speed limits down? This is one of those places in local government where you really scratch your head, and I'll ask the staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, we've seen this issue at city council. We don't have complete discretion to change the speed limits even on our city streets. To do that, we have to do a traffic study of the kind that's been described. And if the average speed is higher, it is extremely difficult, or frankly, in my experience, impossible, to lower the speed limit. Essentially, the state is looking for a situation where you can lower the speed limit to meet the, the current usage. So I think we have to do something like this first to try to slow the traffic. And, you know, I think another difference between this and the ones at Los Robles and El Malino are, my sense is there's not nearly as much cross-traffic from Burley. So it really is going to slow down the volume of trips coming north and south, which is the idea. And we do get a lot of complaints about it. So, other questions? Yes. Is that Betsy? Yeah, I don't know if this team would know about that, but I can certainly look into that, Betsy, and see where we stand on the, the budget allocations.
And we told them what trees we want.
I'm quite sure of that, Nina. But I will look into that issue as well. Yeah. Okay. We do have another presentation, but another question or two? Yes. So just so I'm following, coming sort of west.
Northbound Orange Grove.
Northbound Orange Grove. Oh, you're right. I got you. I'm sorry. I was on the other side of the bridge. Okay. Got it. Do you have any info about that, Rich or Joaquin? Thank you.
Thank you. Joaquin Siqueira, Deputy Director of Transportation. The intersection of Orange Grove and Holly that you're referencing, we do have funding that we just received through our Measure R Mobility Improvement Project funds. This was awarded in February of this year, and one of the projects is to do that, is to provide that green arrow for the northbound and southbound movement, because you're correct. Currently, it's only the Eastside investment.
Don't mention Madison, really, no.
And that was all as a result of Councilmember Madison's work.
No, we, we do get, and we're going to be getting more of substantial Measure R funding, which is the county sales tax increment, and we get a, a part of it, and it's providing for a number of excellent projects, a lot of which are in connection with the seven-ten relinquishment, now repurposing funds. That, as well as the, the decision that was made to not put the gold line above or below grade, to use those funds also, which I know also there were reasonable minds could differ about that. But I think when we see all the benefit that we're going to get from those, those monies freed up, we're going to be grateful for that. So, okay, I'd love to move to the other, but I see a couple more hands. Yes?
The roundabout.
Please, Michael.
I don't know. Thank you for asking. Yeah, construction should last until about July, about six months. Thank you.
She had a question about resurfacing it?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Valerie, you asked about paving those streets?
Please.
So we have a couple of streets in, around this area, Linda Vista. So we just got the bid and this afternoon. So we have one on Linda Vista, and there's another one on Sylvia Canyon from west all the way to Linda Vista. So there are two streets that I know of that we're going to be resurfacing. So we're going to go to council on June twelfth for the award. And then we're looking at starting construction, because we have like twenty-two streets citywide. So we're looking at sometime between September to December to finish those two streets.
We should have more town hall meetings, you know? We got the left turn signal tonight, and we're getting a bid out for, for that. Yes, please. Want to do the Nistale and then the AB forty-three?
So starting with Nistale, it is an intersection we're looking at. You're right, it is an always stop, so it is controlled by stops in all directions. And sometimes people are running that stop sign. So we are looking at other ways to make the stop more visible and seeing what else we can do to enhance the safety of that intersection. The second question you had asked about speed limits and providing a little bit more local control for that, it is a very nuanced law, and some of the things we can do is if we have raised the speed limit by five miles an hour, it allows us to bring that speed limit back down. And it also allows us to take a look at special considerations. A lot of those special considerations were already used in our setting of speed limits. So depending on where that eighty-fifth percentile is and how we have to round up and round down, there's many locations where we just can't take that extra five. But we are looking at all those locations. It is going into effect soon. There was certain aspects of the law that certain pieces had to be put in place before we can actually implement. So we're getting there, and we're trying to see which streets we can actually take that extra five mile an hour reduction in our speed limits.
Okay. So maybe one more question? Yes, please. So let me repeat the question. Going north on Linda Vista from...
The Linda Vista Bridge.
Okay.
The bridge east, about two hundred yards. The street is just terrible.
If you have any knowledge about that or...
Again, we'll look into it, because now that we're going to be paving Linda Vista, this would be, you know, the best opportunity to look at anything that...
Did I describe the area clearly to you?
Yes, yes. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Is it Pasadena or is it La Cañada? I'm not sure.
Well, it's lots is within the Pasadena.
Yeah, it might be La Cañada.
Oh, La Cañada? Okay, we'll look at it.
Oh, well, the street says Linda Vista, so.
Right. Yeah, we will definitely. And we have friends in La Cañada that we can talk to as well, so. Okay, with your permission, then I'd like to move to the next presentation. Thank you again very much for that. I did want to mention a couple of things, though. We are going to do our raffle at the end, and you have to be present to win, so, you know, Laker game, hopefully you recorded it versus, you know, maybe winning a raffle item. The Holly Street Bridge was mentioned, and as you know, that was closed for a few weeks after Public Works, so Public Works could repair some damage from the storms. That's now been reopened. We're grateful for that, obviously, and mostly grateful for the reopening part. Some neighbors had asked about a party. I'm always game for a party, but I think it was only closed for a couple of weeks. So was it more than that? Yeah?
In one direction.
Pardon?
In one direction.
Yeah, in one direction, right. And then I wanted to mention a couple of other things. We have appointed a seven-ten working group to work on revisioning the seven-ten property, the ditch, if you will, not the Caltrans homes. That'll be handled separately, and we are working on that as well. But we have a sixteen-member committee that had their first meeting a month or so ago. They had their second meeting last night, and they're sort of, you know, still early days. They're making progress, though. They appointed a chair. They're trying to identify kind of their mission. And I do want to share with you that I'm, our district had the most applications from any district. I think we had almost as many, if not more, from our district as the entire rest of the city. And that makes sense, because this is all located in our district, and we have a long history of, of being very outspoken, mostly against the freeway, as I was. And so when I made the appointment of one District Six appointee, you know, I made one friend for life and then twenty-four enemies, because I had to call, you know, all of these spectacularly qualified people. And what we've decided that we're doing is we're forming a District Six seven-ten working group. And it's still going to take shape, obviously, but it'll probably meet quarterly, not monthly like the citywide group. And it'll be more of an oversight to what the working group is doing and what the city's up to. You know, there are already some, some really interesting conversations, but never what certainly I intended in terms of the vision for the city. For example, the, the term reparations is becoming a major focus point of this seven-ten working group. The idea that we'd either, you know, give out property, or we'd sell property and then write checks to people, for sure. My goal, and I think all of our goal, is to recreate what was there in terms of a community, and that should be, you know, a community of for all and of all. But to try to, you know, sort of artificially go back, and, you know, these properties were acquired by eminent domain, you know, fair market value was paid, you know, seventy years or so ago. So in any event, stay tuned for that, and we'll be announcing the, the District Six seven-ten working group as well. And I'm excited about being able to work with them as well as the others. We also appointed a rental housing board to implement Measure H, which is the rent control. I know many of you were not in support of that, but I'll tell you, in the city, there was about fifty-four percent adopted it. And that, you know, in politics, that's not a close race. That's a strong majority. So our legal obligation now is to, is to implement that ordinance, and we're doing. So I personally was disappointed that pretty much the only landlords that were, that applied to be on it were also plaintiffs in a lawsuit trying to invalidate the, the measure. And for me and the other members of the council, that was kind of a non-starter. So we did get a couple of landlords on there. I think it's important to have balance, right, on these things? But, you know, going forward, it'd be good to see more landlords who aren't trying to burn the house down, you know, be involved in sort of running the operation too. And hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to do that. I'm sure you've heard gas-powered leaf blowers are now banned in Pasadena, and our code compliance will be responding to any complaints. You know, we're not looking to open a whole new profit center behind this. I think we want compliance. And so it wouldn't surprise me if there were, you know, warnings that went out and more information about, you know, the new ban. But it's something that I think we all take very seriously in terms of neighborhood quality of life. And you should let your landscaper know if they don't already, and you have a landscaper that, that they're banned in Pasadena. Our branch library here in Linda Vista will be closing from May twenty-second for a little over a month. We hope to reopen on June twenty-eighth, and it will be for repairs to the roof of that. And I know some of you are there regularly, and it's a great, great branch library that we are definitely going to keep open, but it needs a roof repair. So for about a month there, it'll be closed. And the San Rafael branch, I think, that was already mentioned down by Nistale, is the closest branch. So, okay, well, let's turn then to the Linda Vista streetlight project, and I'll ask again Public Works staff to come up. I don't know, Brent, if you're going to present or your team here, so let me get out of the way and hand it over to the experts.
Good evening. And by introduction, my name's Richard Yee. I'm a principal engineer, and I run a, a streetlight and traffic signal design group. I've got Elvin Jiang, he's going to be the project manager on this project. And I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to come before you, especially the Linda Vista area, because this is exactly where the project is. So we're going to spend some time going over this project, educating you on what a high-voltage series circuit is. You're all going to be experts by the end of this, and, and then we'll field questions at the end. Next slide. Just, okay, yeah. So the way we've got this presentation kind of outlined, we're going to go through, over the background of the project. We're going to give you our project goals, the specific scope of the Linda Vista circuit. We're going to give you kind of our, at least, proposed strategy and what the next steps look like, and then we'll take questions. So next slide. So you're probably wondering, what is a high-voltage series circuit? The, the Linda Vista circuit, it's made up of about a hundred and eight lights. So each of those little yellow dots is like a streetlight, okay? And there is one transformer that runs the whole circuit. This is, this is the old-school way of doing lights. They would have one thick looped conductor that connects all of those lights. And think of it almost like your Christmas tree lights, right? When one of those bulbs went out, the whole string would go out. I'm sure that those residents that frequent Linda Vista have experienced pretty much dark streets whenever there's a short circuit anywhere in that loop. And that loop can be in the lamp legs that go up to the yellow dots, it could be anywhere in that circuit, okay? If you get a, if you get a ground out, the whole circuit goes out, all hundred and eight lights. Okay, next slide. Oh, and, and back to that last slide. So the way old-school street lighting was, is they would run a constant voltage, and it's six-point-six amps, but unlimited, I'm sorry, six-point-six, yeah, amps, but unlimited voltage. So the, the system would pump in as much energy as needed to light up all the lights. So if you think about it, that's a ton of energy, okay? So a modern circuit, like how we design them now, is we run them in series. So essentially, each block, instead of the whole ten blocks, excuse me, would each be on its own circuit. And it's similar to house power. So if you've got electricity running to your house, if you're running an electric dryer, you're probably running on two-twenty. All your outlets are probably one-ten. The same thing happens with our new, more modern circuits, is we run smaller circuits, and it runs on two-twenty, one-ten, which is much safer power to deal with. Okay. So the main reason why we want to change this circuitry and, and get it off of the high-voltage series is because of public safety. It's public safety and it's worker safety. Whenever you're working around this high-voltage series, so hypothetically, if a vehicle in a storm knocks over one of our streetlights, it's dumping unlimited energy into that open circuit, okay? So it's really kind of a public safety issue, and, and that's for the motoring public, that's for the general public, but it's also for our crews that have to go and troubleshoot this, these circuits, especially during inclement weather or a vehicle knocked down. I mean, if you get the combination of a vehicle hitting a pole next to a hydrant, I mean, it's just, you know, the combinations are really difficult. So the number one factor of why we convert these circuits is because of safety. And then, next, next one. So the next reason is because these circuits are, sometimes, some of the circuits are, are built in the turn of the century, many, many, many decades old, right? And so the equipment that they used back then, this is what we call, it's one of the transformers, so that upper right photo is an oil-filled transformer, and it has this like spring switch in it that has to do with that variable voltage, and it's just, our water and power doesn't even service these anymore. We have to send them out to somebody like in Oklahoma, and the guy refurbishes them in his garage. That's the kind of antiquated transformer that we want to get off of. We want to get, we want to come to a more modern, regular transformer that our water and power can service. And so this is, and then the, the lower right is a light bulb, and they're, if you go to Home Depot, it's really hard to find incandescent bulbs these days. But these bulbs in particular, they're twenty-five-hundred lumen bulbs, and we can't get them anymore. They're almost impossible to find. We've looked offshore, we've looked, it's just these, these bulbs are high, heavy duty because they have to handle that really high wattage. And then like the porcelain socket at the bottom, it's just, this is old-school stuff that, that our crews are having just difficulty maintaining, both the transformers, the bulbs, the sockets. It's, it's really, really antiquated. Like, just the way the porcelain socket works, we want to get off of this. This is like the, the second biggest reason why we want to switch. Next slide.
I have the sample here, by the way, if you want to see.
Yeah, we, we have samples. We brought it in if you want to actually touch and feel this stuff. It's really, really quite fascinating what they did 50 or 60 or 80 years ago, but it really isn't what we use today. Okay, so overall, these are, this is a, a map that we generated about two years ago, and these are all the remaining circuits. So everything in color is a remaining high-voltage area. So obviously, to the right, that's like Hastings Ranch. Linda Vista is the orange one that, that kind of runs diagonal on the left. And it's a very long circuit. You have many circuits that cascade off of that. Afton, I can't think of the name of all the streets up there, but, but you're aware of those. And then down, down below, there's a number of circuits below the 134 freeway. So there's, this swath of the city, this eastern edge, has quite a few circuits that are still remaining as high voltage. Everything else has been converted in the city over time. It's just these are the remaining, these were 23 circuits as of about two years ago. We've recently completed about five of them. Linda Vista's the next one. Excellent. So this is kind of a snapshot of that, we'll call it the east leg of it. We, we finished Circuit 263, that was a Royal. We did that about a year and a half ago. We did Mariana, which is 155. We're in process with 013, that's, that's Marengo. We did S248, which was Lake Avenue, and then we're working on one in, in Hastings Ranch on Rosemead. But you can see S104, very long circuit. It gives our crews, both water and power and public works, the most problems. The most brownouts, the most blackouts, the most, they're out there dealing with it now because somebody stole a bunch of our wires. Somebody under the bridge stole, I don't know how many feet of wire, and it knocked out the circuit south of Holly. So it's dark down there now because they cut, and we're, our crews are trying to replace the stuff. And interestingly enough, the, the conductors that we use, like, like normal house wire is copper cable with a plastic insulation. The old-school conductors were copper wire, but it had aluminum cladding on it. And so anytime you had old galvanized pipe that developed leaking it, it would introduce water, it would short the circuit. Our crews have to find this short somewhere, anywhere in that whole loop. You remember that, that photo, right? It's super hard to chase that, troubleshoot that down to the circuit level. In series, series, you might have one neighborhood go out, but it's every other light. The way we do the lights now, because we're running on 220, half of the lights, every other light is on one leg of it, and the other one's on the other leg. So only, you're still going to have light on the street. Whereas I think if you go out there today, the crews are still troubleshooting, it may be dark south of Holly in that section of Linda Vista. Okay, so this specific Linda Vista circuit, by the numbers, there's 108 streetlights that we're going to change. The poles consist of metal poles, the original metal poles. And anytime there was a vehicle knocked down of a pole, the, the policy back in, I want to say it's the 70s or 80s, was to replace the metal poles with precast concrete poles. And so we have 45 precast concrete poles out there. So 45 had been, either the poles went down because of corrosion at the base, or it got hit by, went down in a windstorm, or got hit by a vehicle. But over the course of time, about 50%, 40 or 50% of the, of the poles are now precast concrete. And then we have a series of different types of lanterns out there. The original lantern was a metal lantern. I don't know if it was copper, it might be brass, it could be copper. It looks like, it looks like copper, like aged copper. Then we have plastic globes, and we also have, we also have plastic painted lanterns. We have a bunch of photos that I want to show you. And then lastly, we have, some of the intersections have what we call roadway lights. We call them Cobra heads. So some of those will get changed out as well. Okay, so this, this is, these are photos of the original metal poles with metal lanterns. And you can see, the one on the left is probably in a little bit better shape, but depending on whether, where the placement of that was, if it's in someone's parkway and they're sprinkling it three times a week, or two times a week if we're allowed, or whatnot, that water over time tends to erode the base, and it has these tie rods inside, they wear out, and then the thing comes, you know, it, it just gets a lot of rust on it. You can see the upper right, that the, the glass panels, they, they originally look like this, very clear, almost you could see through it. And over time, they kind of need to be cleaned, they get dirty. Sometimes the glass panels would be replaced because they were damaged or whatnot, they'd replace them with polycarbonate ones, and that's what happens to plastic and polycarb when oxidized and sitting in the sun, you know, for many, many years. So we're going to talk about a refurbishment of existing lanterns. Next slide. The, the second type of situation we have at there is, this is what we call an 800 CL, the, the, the concrete pole. It's a pre-stressed, precast concrete pole. And our crews, this is like a typical installation in a lot of parts of our city, where we use this aluminum, aluminum base, and then we mount a plastic or polycarbonate globe, we'll call it. We call this an acorn globe, right? This, this is, we have this situation throughout the city in a lot of places. In Linda Vista, this 800 CL was tinted verity green, so it's supposed to kind of have that green, coppery look, but definitely the lantern's out of place, or the globe's out of place. But this is a common situation up and down Linda Vista. Next one. Okay, so this is an 800 CL pole, but it has a plastic lantern that was painted to look like the metal lanterns. It's almost looks like a Christmas ornament, right? So this is what we want to get away from as well. So I just wanted to show you kind of the three main situations that exist on Linda Vista. Go ahead, next slide. Okay, so this is kind of one of our proposals, is an 800 CL pole in verity green, and we have a replica lantern on top that we can retrofit with an LED light luminaire. And so you have the, you have the, honestly, the, the, the concrete poles, way better longevity. They, you can't, you know, they really get no graffiti, there's almost no maintenance to them, they last forever. And then we, we think that with the lantern on it, we can tie together the existing metal poles and precast poles with that lantern look, with clearish-looking glass panels. You're going to get a better light, it's going to look very uniform. This is, and so that right socket is one where it's an existing high-voltage series. We, I believe we stepped it down with a transformer, but what, that is one of the sockets. So we're, we've got that, that pole was, I'm sorry, that lantern was taken a photo on Yokam, which is, I guess, one street over from Lida, and that's in existence. If you want to go out and look at it, you can look, we can give you the address of this specific one, and you can see that it's already out there, we're already using it, and you probably didn't even notice it. So, next slide. Okay, and then just to cap it off, we have those Cobra heads, and the Cobra head upper photo on the left is a typical high-pressure sodium Cobra head. It's kind of like a big incandescent bulb. The ones on the lower, left and lower right are GE LED luminaires that we use throughout the city. We're going to replace the Cobra head with these GEs. It has actually a better light distribution, better visual acuity, all the way around. It's just a, a much better product that, that's readily available and serviceable by our, our field crews. Next slide. Okay, so overall, the scope and budget. So our intention is to come in and first and foremost, because we talked about the safety issues, is to get off of the series circuit. That's, that's really the, the hard part of this project is, we need to install new conduits. We, we intend to keep poles, drill through foundations, add, and, sorry, add conduits, add conductors, add pull boxes, and try and maintain the existing system and get it off of the high voltage and put it on multiple first. And then we're going to come in with our city crews and actually refurbish as we go, and repair and replace, or switch to lanterns. And we have to kind of do it in a very systematic way because we have to kind of keep that circuit live. So we have to keep cutting little loops off of it and make the loops smaller, and essentially add a number, we have to add 10 power feeds, so we have to add 10 new power sources, essentially one for each block. Each block will kind of be its own little loop. Next slide. Okay, so we really have kind of three phases to this project, and this is, this is part of the first phase and probably a very, very important part. So it's the public engagement, and I thank you for coming out to hear this, this presentation because it's really important. We want to get that part of it right, okay? And we're going to take, if you look at the timeline, we have about a year to figure that out. More importantly, James kind of alluded to a resurfacing project that's coming up, and he's actually awarding that contract. He's going to be in construction probably late summer through, I don't know, maybe April of next year. So we have this window of time to put in some of the crossing substructure. So in a streetlight system, you have to, you have lights going down both sides of the street, they, they're staggered, but you have to have crossings to tie conduits together to create those loops. So we have power feeds, which are generally from vaults in the middle of Linda Vista. We need to now get conduit out to the pull, the parkways. We need to do crossings for each block, and we have to do all that before James' resurfacing job. So we're kind of under a little bit of a crunch, and so that's why we're, we're looking at maybe a two-pronged approach of dealing with this. So Elvin and I, we have the design, and the design is essentially keeping the existing poles, except for, I think we've identified two poles that need to come out because they're just, they're metal poles that just need, they're like rusted at the base, they're for like falling over. So we're going to replace those two with two precast concretes, and then we're going to hire a contractor to come in and install conduits, pull boxes, and the street crossings. We're going to enlist Water and Power to do 10 power feeds for us and get the Linda Vista portion part done. And then we have, you know, our goal would be starting, so that, you know, trying to have all that done by summer of next year. And then our crews, depending on the feedback of where we want to go with lantern, light color, you know, all those aesthetic parts, we can deal with, with our crews with time. We're just kind of under a time crunch right now to try and get the, some of the substructure in on Linda Vista before resurfacing. Because once you, once you resurface a street, we generally have a moratorium that you cannot cut that street for how many years, James?
Five.
Five years. So that would mean that we couldn't do this project for five years. And we want to do this project, it's the next project, and it makes sense to do, okay? So this is kind of where we're at right now, is again, we're going to keep engaging the public, we'll come back to this community, but we'd like to get that crossing substructure in, okay? Within, between now and, I think we've in ourselves March. So that's why you kind of see the, we've got pretty much the design, that part of it. We're going to have to bid and award it, we're going to hire somebody, and we're going to knock out the crossings and the power feeds before March, before he finishes his contract. So he's going to throttle, I think you, how, 20, 20 locations?
We have 20.
So we told him to hold that off until the end when we can, before we can do our work.
We'll save the best for last.
Okay, next slide. Okay, yeah, so I'm happy to take any questions. I'm sure there are questions.
Yeah. Let me kind of curate the questions, and we're grateful, obviously, for the coordination, right, of doing the work when we can. Is it fully funded? Is it in our capital budget? Yep?
It, yes, it is.
Great, okay. So we were all dressed up and ready to go? Yes, sir. So, very knowledgeable question, let me repeat it for people in the back. Will we match the color temperature of the new LED lights? I actually think you've got a slide on that, if you go after.
Yes, yeah, we actually anticipated that question. And so we, let me give you a little bit on color temperature. So color temperature is this very small visible light, within the, within the electromagnetic spectrum, visible light is a very small component of everything that's perceived, okay? Next slide. And just, the warmer the color temperature is to the left, the cooler the color temperature to the right. So a higher, what we call a Kelvin rating, okay, will give you wider light or more yellowy light. So to give you, to just try and manage your expectations, the existing high-pressure sodiums are about 2,300 Kelvin. They're kind of in the very orange-yellowy. We propose 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin. It's kind of a sweet spot between nice, warm ambiance, but you still, you don't get the 4,000 or 5,000, which looks more like daylight. So that's what we use in the city now for all of our LEDs, it's 3,000 or less. We're kind of proposing 2,700 would probably be the, the best sweet spot for Linda Vista.
Yeah, I know, for me, I'd want to know that almost every house is not going to be impacted, you know, if it's too bright white, so I don't know if we'll be able to roll out, you know, demonstrations or what have you, Rich, but it'd be important.
Yes, absolutely. And so what we've done for the other high-voltage series districts that we worked on, we ran some mockups. Well, you know, so we'll point you to some locations, and we'll actually try out, they just screw in. Once you, once we, um, once you get it down to lower power, it's, it's a normal screw-in socket, it's called a corn cob light, and you just literally screw it in, you can kind of get them almost at Home Depot. They're long-lasting, our crews love them.
The one at Yokam, in that color range that you described?
Uh, the one at Yokam is an existing high-voltage light. I believe we stepped it down with a transformer. So we'll have to create a prototype location, and, and we can run all different color temperatures. We could try it from 23 all the way up to 3,000. It depends on what, that's the part that you guys have a say in, okay? And, and doesn't really matter to us whether we use 27, 25, 3,000. It's, it's what your, maybe the, the bulk of your community would like.
They, they have a say in everything?
Yes, well, at least in that.
Yeah, but in that, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
We want to rely on our professional staff in terms of the needs of the, and, you know, it was, I was thinking how odd that Hastings Ranch and Linda Vista, the two, maybe the greatest fire hazards in the city, have this antiquated system. I didn't hear you describe a fire risk, but anything electrical, you know, I would have a concern about that. But we had more questions. Let's start. Nina, you're in 100% support.
The answer's yes. And so the slide in front of you is an 800 CL pole, it's precast concrete. So the metal poles, we're going to refurbish the existing lantern. We want to keep the existing lantern. We're going to change out, you know, we may power wash them, prime them, paint them. Some people like the patina of the metal because it's kind of the aged, so that's to be determined, what we do with the metal poles. Where, where our intention is to go in and refurbish the existing metal lanterns on the metal poles, you know, change the glass housings, update the light engine in it to an LED. And then these 800 CL precast poles, we're going to put in this replica lantern. It has essentially the same form and shape. The neck of it is a little bit different because the, the metal poles come to a narrower taper. These precast poles kind of go, they, they taper a little bit less, so the lantern is proportionally the same. You know, it'll have the same look, but it's not exactly the same, the same size at the neck. But we intend to replace all of the non-standard lantern globes with this replica lantern. Yeah, so the 800 CL poles, they've been ordered in the past a verity green tint to them. If you, if you look at other 800 CLs in the city, they're all very gray, very whitish gray. These, depending on the batch, will have a little more green, some are darker green, some are a little lighter green, but they do, they do all have a green tint. And I can assure you, if, if there are any that are gray, we will switch them to, to verity green. So if, 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 if one comes to our attention that wasn't already verity green, or whatever, we, you know, our crews can do that. They, they work on streetlights all the time. Sure, the question is, is will the, converting from high voltage to series circuitry plus conversion to LED, absolutely reduction in energy. It's probably 60% energy reduction. And the, and the maintenance and operations effort will be tenfold easier, because you're not going to have the same brownout circuitry, you're not going to have whole neighborhoods dark, all that goes away because of, because of the substructure, the electrical conversion. It's just a more robust type of infrastructure, much more easily maintained. It actually produces a, a better light, believe it or not, and it has a better visual acuity. Things that you see actually look more like, you know, you look at a brown bear, it's going to look a little more like a brown bear.
Yeah, the comment was about, you know, the whole city, including the city departments, have to conserve energy if we're going to hold ourselves to these mandates about, you know, carbon-free energy, and we do. You notice that Brookside, a lot of the, the golf course has gone brown because of the watering restrictions and the reduction, so, absolutely. And I, I've been impressed by how the city really does hold itself to those same standards that, that would apply to residents, obviously. So, other questions on, yes, Betsy? Good question about whether this is an opportunity to add streetlights where perhaps they're needed.
You know, it, can we, can you give me that information after, maybe talk to me after, and we'll, we'll certainly take a look. It depends on, it depends on availability of.
Funding.
Yeah, funding, it's probably going to come down to a funding issue. But we can obviously make it ready for future lighting, if anything, you know, get, have a pull box land on your corner. So, well, can we talk after? Yeah, it, it's worth us at least evaluating.
Yeah, and I'd suggest to anyone that knows about it. Yeah, and I'd suggest to anyone that knows about an area, I do know we have some private roads in Linda Vista, and I don't know if those are covered by city streetlights or not. Do you know, Rich?
Generally, no.
Generally not. But for public streets, if there's an oppor, this seems like a good opportunity, and for a little bit of incremental, you know, marginal cost, maybe in next year's budget, we could, we could remedy that. I'd sure love to hear about that, Betsy. So, copy us and anyone else. Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you asked that question. So we actually did create a prototype. We tried to do exactly that. There's one, I don't know what the street is, south of the Linda Vista library. It runs along the school there.
Oh, Brian.
Yeah, Brian. We actually met with a lighting vendor and took one of our existing metal poles and had it cast, had a mold cast, and they created a replica. And if you look at it, we, we, we did this maybe, I don't know, six months ago. We just didn't, didn't like it. It didn't look, you could take a look at it, and obviously, it's available there. It's literally, I think, close to that T intersection that goes up to the school. It is a replica pole that was made out of cast aluminum, molded from the original, and powder coated. I just, it doesn't look as nice as, to me, the verity green 800 CL with a, with a lantern on it. I think it's, we, we did look at that, we had, we also did look at some county, LA County ones that are on Altadena.
New York.
New York Drive, trying to find something that's kind of off the shelf, because essentially, these are things that our crews are going to have to stock in the event of a future knockdown. So it's got to be readily reproducible, you know, and that's probably why we went with the 800 CLs, because we have them, we have thousands of them in the city. If, if you'll start looking around, you'll start seeing them everywhere. But it's, it's something that our crews have readily available, they, they can put back up. They could restore that lighting, because that's really a key thing to have a light out, you know. So we're certainly open to that aspect of it. We've reached out to a number of vendors to try and create replicas. We've looked at off-the-shelf products, and none of them really do that original metal pole justice without being extremely exorbitant. So we did look at it, and there's a huge cost factor with replicating an exact copy. And it's going to end up being cast aluminum with powder coating, so it's not really going to be the same anyway.
I have a related question, if I could. What, what will we do with the old metal poles?
We're going to refurb, we're going to refurbish them. We're going to keep them in place. So all the existed, the 60.
This is an overlay.
Exactly, the 60 or so, we're going to come in and clean them. And then some other districts, we've primed them and painted them. So like, near Chandler School, Prospect and Armatto, we went and, and cleaned those and painted them. And so that was something that we wanted to bring to this group was, you know, to what level do you want us, some people love the original patina. We could come in and paint and give it a paint job and then clean the, the lantern housings, you know. There's all different levels of refurbishment that we can do with our city crews. It just depends on that level of, do you want to keep it as original, original, or do you want it to function? In our opinion, we, we want it to function more like what the streetlight was intended to do, which is to cast light into that pedestrian space, right? So.
But it is an aesthetic issue, and so we're not going to have a situation of alternating. Will you be able to tell the difference?
Between?
The metal ones that you described that we're keeping and the new ones.
The, the metal ones that we're keeping, we hope to refurbish in place. The precast concrete poles we're keeping, but we're changing lanterns, so those will all be new, new lanterns. And though, the lanterns, the look of the poles themselves and the staggered spacing, you're going to get this uniform look of the lanterns. The LED light quality coming out is going to be the same between, hopefully between the old metal pole and the new, I mean, the, the old lantern and the new lantern, because we're changing the glass panels in the old lanterns. And all the new lanterns will have a similar glass panel.
Great. I saw another hand, I thought. Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, the, the precast concrete ones have, they're pre-stressed, and they have metal strands in them, so they have to have a certain dimension to them, just for structural integrity. They are about, I want to say, I don't know, four inch, six, six inches at the top, maybe 10 inches at the bottom. And there's a center diameter where the conductors come up. And other than that, it's precast concrete with metal reinforcing that runs vertically. And then I believe there might even be hoop steel that goes up to give it structural integrity. So there's vertical steel plus hoop steel, and all that needs cover, well, in concrete terms, you need a certain amount of distance to the outside, the inside, to cover the steel, or else the concrete will spall off the steel. And then, you know, we don't want to see that happen. So it's got to be a certain thickness to maintain that concrete cover.
You couldn't cast the original one in concrete?
Exactly.
Okay. Any more questions? Yes, there, Wes, and then the lady.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of the reason why we did the three-phased approach. Well, the two-phase construction approach, right? So our intention is just to have a contractor come in and directional drill conduits within the parkways, do the crossings, have our water and power, do the service feeds. And so those kinds of numbers, we, we do streetlights and signals all the time, so we have kind of established unit costs, we, we know, and we've kind of padded those numbers. And then we will use our street crews to come in and do the refurbished side. And that's going to be, so the, the substructure is going to take probably the good, better part of a year to do, finish designing, get it out, you know. This time, maybe summer of next year, we'll be done with that part. And then our crews come in, and that's going to take much longer, mainly because we have to still vet this aesthetic part of it. And then, depending on what comes out of this public forum, will kind of determine the cost factor. We know pretty much what the cost of the substructure is going to be, to within a certain margin. It's that if, if this group decides that you want to make everything a metal pole, well, that, you need to add $2 million to the project. We think with this version, we have enough within the existing budget and existing CIP to complete the whole thing. And that's with the combination of contractor and city crew, with, with our current strategy. And again, if, if this group decides that they want something more than that, then we would have to go back to the well or the council or whatever, look for other funding sources, grants, whatnot, and it would delay the overall completion.
So let us hear from you if you have views about it, and we'll circulate the, the PowerPoint if we made, anyone that would like that, just let Justin know. I want to give you a chance, too, to, if you didn't fill out a card, that's what we use for the raffle. So Justin Chapman, our field representative extraordinaire for District 6 is here. Just get his attention, and he'll do it. Let's just do one more question on the streetlights. You had your hand up, I think?
Thank you.
I want to answer a question about fire safety.
Okay. If you're going to move to another topic, or is it on this one?
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on. If it's about this, I, I want to make sure we cover all the questions about this, and then we'll open it up for.
I don't know whether it was related to the lighting system or not.
Fair enough. I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay.
Because we are going to have Q and A on other stuff, whatever you, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know specifically about residential, but I was alerted by my, one of our field supervisors that somebody had cut out some of our high-voltage series circuits, which is a serious issue, considering that the high-voltage series is on a time clock. Had they cut that in the middle of the night, they'd probably be electrocuted. So it, fortunately, the circuit wasn't live when they tried to steal the wire, but I don't know if that was related to any residential property. I only know of a couple of streetlights that had burned-out circuitry at the bottom. They're still troubleshooting, they've got crews out there trying to figure it out, trying to get those lights back on. It's, it's really, really a problem. But I, unfortunately, I don't know if it's related to anything on private property.
What was your cross street? And we can check that also.
It was about 200 place, and it was on, it was the city property, it was under Linda Vista. It was whatever electrical line.
Right. Yeah, it could be the transformer or other related issues. Okay, a couple more questions then on the, Nina?
Yeah, so the question is, what are we going to be doing in the parkway? So any street lighting system, at least the current street lighting system, if it's not overhead fed, it needs to be fed from underground, which means at the base of each pole, there's generally a pull box. It's a concrete box, it's about 18 inches by 24 inches. And then there's a metal conduit. We usually use inch and a half galvanized metal conduit that connects each of those pull boxes. And then we have to run conductors in those conduits. So the conductors that tie each of the new streetlights together has to have a conduit and a pull box between each. And so.
So will we protect those roots of the street?
Yes, yes. We, we kind of do street lighting all the time, and, and you have to, twofold. There's utilities that we need to pothole, which means we need to figure out where all the sewer laterals are, all the power facilities, any gas lines, any water meters. All that is in the parkway as well. And so that, in addition to trees, generally we'll dive underneath trees, and it depends on, obviously, the size and species. Sometimes we can go around them. The directional boring allows us to, to guide a directional rig that, that we can direct the conduit, or the, the path of the conduit in and around obstructions. So we can, you know, the operator can make the thing go deeper, wider, left, right, up, down. And then they'll, they'll pull in the, the new galvanized conduit, and that's what connects each of the pull boxes. So it is about 6,800, 8,600 lineal feet of conduit. That's a lot of conduit. So that part, the substructure, is probably the most costly part. It's estimated about $2.5 million. Of the 3 or so million we have in the bank, the bulk of it is substructure.
Okay, we're over our time, so I want to take just one or two more questions on the lights, and then I'll open it up for any other Q and A. I want to be sure to do the raffle, too. So let's start back there, yes?
Um, yeah, so there's tree canopies. It's, it's not something that we've really entertained too much. We've entertained it in remote areas where we can't get power. It, it's not something that we've really, really looked at on a large-scale basis, mainly because we've been approached by a number of vendors, and frankly, I, I don't, I just don't like a lot of the products. They either have huge solar panels to them, I think they're visually obtrusive. They may work in certain situations where we can't get power to, and we have to do some sort of a panel array for it. But I think our existing and proposed, you know, streetlight systems are kind of more tied with the look and feel of the city. And I think the solar ones, in my opinion, would probably change the look. And I'm not sure that's, I think we're trying to stick with the, you know, the historic look.
If the energy source is renewable, then that would make the solar redundant potentially. So, okay, yes, Diane.
Can you tell us your name again, please?
Sure, absolutely. Richard Yi. And, yeah, and we have copies of the presentation, so unfortunately, I made 20, but we can provide it to Justin, the version of this, and it has our contact information.
You can email it.
I'd just like to be able to contact you offline.
Absolutely. I can give you a card after as well.
Okay. Other questions on streetlights? Then I do want to do, oh, one more. Yep. Good question.
Yeah, so.
Will they be off during the construction phase?
I'll let you.
When, when the conduit install and tap into the, changing the new circuit, there's a time that the circuits will be off, but we can do it in the different phases. So it's not going to be off all the time.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, thank you so much for that presentation to all of our representatives from Public Works and PUSD tonight. Thank you, thank you. I do want to do the, our raffle, but are there other questions about other issues? Yes.
I've heard, um, you can hear about what's going on.
Well, not anything with any sort of clear direction as of yet. The district, and I expect this will be one of the things the president will discuss tonight about the state of the schools, is they are looking at closing more campuses, they're looking at surplusage of campuses. It's sort of a topic that's always on the, the table, it seems, with PUSD. But we, we don't have anything to report at present. I will tell you, my biggest anxiety is that they're, they've began to discuss again closing San Rafael School. And I feel that would be a big mistake, because, you know, we used to have many schools in West Pasadena from PUSD, and that's our last one that operates as a public school site. So I think to close that would be a sad thing. But that's a separate administration, and they, you know, they've got problems. You know, the, the whole sort of second tier of management just left. It was fairly public that the superintendent was applying for a job in Columbus. So, you know, they've got their hands full there, and we need to try to support them as best we can. Other questions, other topics?
Yes, hiya.
So the question is about traffic around Rose Bowl events, and is thought given, I can guarantee you a lot of thought goes into that. It may not always seem like that. I think the, you know, the biggest issue is when we have events with a huge amount of attendance. Those are the, the most challenging for us. And in terms of the routing, we do try hard to keep traffic out of the neighborhoods, and for sure, parking out of the neighborhoods.
We do a good job of that.
And they, they do, thank you, the comment was, they do a good job at that, although we have our issues from time to time. Again, depending on how much. So the comment is, it seems like residents don't have the same freedom of ingress and egress with a resident pass. I haven't observed that, but, you know, we can look into that. And again, I sit on the RBOC, and we can take that up. I know part of the calculation is getting people in and out of the actual site, you know, down there, because it's a problem when it takes people three hours to get out of the stadium. But that seems to be the other side of the coin of the comment you're making, that thought needs to be given to, to doing that. And I know a lot of time, energy, and resource spent on Uber now, you know, with people drinking at events or what have you. Better to have them picked up and dropped off. And, but it's a fair point.
I think what's happened with the general parking.
Comment is about Salvia Canyon, and have they moved? I know for the music festivals, it seems like that's the case. I don't know that that's the case for the games. I think there are other ways. But we'll, we'll definitely keep that in mind, and, you know, I'll bring that up at the next board meeting of RBOC. Yes. So we talked about that at the very beginning of the meeting, and we do have a proposal from the RBOC to add a family miniature golf and upgraded driving range down at the Brookside, where the golf is taking place. And the full city council is going to hear that matter probably in June, at one of the meetings. The RBOC has recommended that the council adopt that out of an array of different projects to sustain the Rose Bowl Stadium in the future with, you know, financial challenges. So, yeah.
Is it the existing driving range that would be improved, or?
It would be, yeah. Yep.
And, you know, I took away, you know, the alcohol.
Well, the golf course is already changing because of fewer rounds. And, you know, I, that's not the purpose of this project. But this project would involve an expansion of the driving range and of the, you know, family miniature golf. And I think we would lose some holes to the miniature golf, or at least parts of holes. So, Nina, please.
We can get them out.
Yeah, it's, I mean, these are difficult choices, right? The, the Rose Bowl Stadium certainly is world-renowned, and, yeah, there's a lot that goes on down there now, you know. We have.
This is permanent light.
We have soccer down there with, which has lights at night. We obviously have a stadium that has major lighting down there. So there's a sacrifice, no question. Question is, you know, with a limited range of choices to provide financial stability, which one should we choose? But I think we, we need to have a discussion about that as a full city and a full city council. There are representatives of, on the RBOC who live on both sides of the Arroyo, residents. And residents regularly come to those meetings. And again, I want to encourage everybody to come when it's on the city council agenda and raise these, these things. And of course, at this point, we're looking at the, sort of the outer limits of the project, you know. Could it operate maybe not till 10:00 PM? That's a possibility. On the trees, I've asked that question several times, and I'm told that I think the number is much lower, and that they'll replace by a factor of two to one the 40 or so non-native, hold on, let me, the 41, I think it is, non-native trees that would be taken. They would replace them two to one with native trees. If that's wrong, we need to know that.
It's never been changed?
No question. I mean, I think that's an example of when the council hears the environmental impact issues, we need to land somewhere very specifically on that, absolutely. Okay, other questions or comments? I want to give other folks a chance, and then I'll come back. Yep. Anything else? I do want to do our raffle. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So what that refers, the question is, does it have to have an environmental impact report? And legally, it doesn't if the council finds. it doesn't if the council finds what's called a mitigated negative declaration that-- Correct. That's correct. Yeah. What it means is that there are environmental impacts, but that they can be managed without having to do, they're not so extraordinary or beyond that they can't be managed within the context of what's already the use of the Central Arroyo. Well, you know, I'm, I think, a little more open-minded than some of us about whether, you know, miniature golf is the end of the Arroyo as we know it, you know. But I'm mindful of the lighting and of obviously the trees and the natural habitat there. And, you know, I do see the Central Arroyo as being a locus of family recreation. You know, you look at the walkers, the bikers, the soccer, tennis, swimming, baseball, softball, skating, you know, all the, to say nothing of the 90,000-seat football stadium we have there. So the question is, if we want to keep that stadium and what we do every New Year's, we need financially to have a strong foundation. And this is one way to do that. And, but for sure, we got to mitigate, you know, any and all impacts on the community and on the environment. No question. No question. And we are looking at that, at the transit occupancy tax for hotels. You know, that's not been robust over the last few years because of COVID and the reduced travel, business travel and all. And we have looked at more sort of music festivals, but those start to wear on the neighbors as well, when you're talking about, you know, the traffic and the sound impacts. So, you know, yeah, Wes? No, for sure, mini golf is not the panacea to all these issues, but it's a way to offset the reduced revenue from golf. You know, for many years, golf produced a steady stream of return to the RBOC just from the greens fees. And that's changed a lot for a lot of reasons. So the financial condition is doing better now. You know, we got some major grants during COVID, including like the shuttered theater grant. You know, we never think of the Rose Bowl as a theater, but we were able to get substantial monies for that. But I think the idea is that the golf operation down there has always been an important, you know, pillar of the financial foundation for the stadium. And this is a way to adapt to the lower rounds played and the lower revenue from traditional golf. You know, traditional golf is a fun game, but it takes a long time to play. It's expensive, and it's a very difficult game to become even mediocre at. For families and younger couples, miniature golf is a lot of fun, and it's a, it is a social thing. So I think we have to be mindful of all the impacts. But it looks to be a very positive project. And the driving range also, you know, people may not be able to play a six-hour round of golf, but they can go hit balls for an hour. And so the driving range would be open longer, have more bays, have better technology to help the golfers who are practicing. And all of that comes with a big financial return. So, you know, that's the question. And I, again, I like the conversation. This isn't just no, it's what else can we do? What else can we look for to be able to keep the stadium if that's our goal? If not, you know, in Miami, they tore the Orange Bowl down. It became obsolete, and they tore it down. And SOFI is a big threat to what we do here on New Year's Day, no question. They would love to have the Rose Bowl game over at SOFI Stadium. So, yes, sir? There is, and I don't have that at top of mind right now, but that'll be part of the council discussion. And I think we should kick the tires hard on that as well, both the costs and the revenue. Well, the problem we get there is residents, non-residents. And we have raised greens fees for non-residents a bit. But the truth is, there are way too many golf courses right now, and not enough golfers to take them. So the fact that we're doing well just says that we're at the right price point. Okay, well, again, we'll make sure, and Justin, please push out to everybody that left an email address. And if you didn't, let Justin have it, you know, the date and time of the council meeting, let us hear from you, because your opinion counts, believe me. Remember, I started this conversation by saying six of the eight council seats are up, you know, for this and any issue you really care about. Let them hear from you. And my colleagues and I listen to you, believe me. So let me do the raffle things. And I do want to say I owe an apology to Bobby Ferguson. I think I said you were with KPCC. I may be longing for that, since they now call themselves like L.A. Ist or something like that. But you're not, you're from K-Pass, our local media, and we're very grateful that you're here. Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much, and have a great evening. Thank you.